I call to order the May 9th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Please join me in the flag page. And will you please take a roll call of members? All right, oh, first, sorry, I skipped up. All right, Agenda item number two, the swearing in of our new Planning Commission member, Alex Chakini. So Alex, if you want to come right up to front there. And now a roll call of members, please.
Tinsley. Chakini.
Here.
Kaluza.
Here.
Morovitch. Zimmer. Ink. Swenson.
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, approval of minutes. Approval of the April 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Fellow commissioners, any changes?
No.
The meeting or the minutes will stand. And Agenda item number five, any announcements?
Provided tonight's item is not tabled, the May 23rd Planning Commission meeting will be canceled.
All right, thank you. All right, and Agenda item number six, this is a public hearing for Deborah Holman to consider the application of Deborah Holman for an interim use permit to allow an apiary, which is beekeeping in the RS2 Single Family Residential District located at 18005 Jacard Path. And then here to speak about the item briefly is Deborah. If you'd like to come up to the front, please.
Hi, my name is Deborah Holman. Good evening. My intent for the plan for the apiary is to start out with one colony and eventually adding my second, which is the maximum limit, I believe, I can have for the size acreage I have. I have no intent to sell the honey, would rather gift, if there's any surplus, to friends and family. The type of bee I'm looking at is they're a hybrid Italian Carneolus bee, and they're bred with a focus on hygienic behavior and a gentle temperament, and they also have mite-resistant characteristics. Management plan for them would be to use IPM, which is, sorry, Integrated Pest Management, which is also includes the powder sugar dusting, screen bottom board, green drone comb, breaking the queen's brood cycle, et cetera, et cetera. I will be testing for mites and treating if necessary, and then also we'll be doing swarm methods, creating an artificial swarm, caging the queen, and giving them their adequate space. In the event for the behavior of the bees that they become too defensive, obviously I would requeen them. So yeah, try to answer any questions if anyone has.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. I'm just going to do a quick overview of the item. Frank prepared this report. Hopefully y'all had a chance to review it. He is out of town tonight. So Deborah Holman has submitted the application for an interim use permit. The property is located at 18005 Jacard Path, and it is zoned RS2 Single Family Residential. You can see arrows on the map of where the property is located. This is a layout of her property. And so she's asking for an interim use permit to allow an apiary as an accessory use. The interim use permit does allow up to two apiaries. I'm not even sure if I'm saying that right. Apiraries, apiraries, for the keeping of honeybees at the northwest corner of her property. So you can see on the site plan, there's an existing shed up in the corner, and then the location for the hive just adjacent to the shed. These are allowed in the residential districts with an interim use permit in accordance with performance standards. So what Frank did in the staff report is he went and provided detailed information as to the interim use performance criteria. I'm not going to highlight all of those. Again, the applicant has more knowledge on how these function and work than staff. This is the very first time we have received this application. This was introduced into the zoning ordinance, my understanding, several years ago. But the ordinance does lay out quite a bit of criteria, and through the review, we have determined that the applicant does meet each of the criteria required for this interim use to be issued. So some of the things that she's already highlighted, they're limited to a number of two colonies, just based on her property size, needs to be within 20 feet of the property line, and you can see that she's tucking it in away from the home, as well as right next to the shed. Needs to be required in the rear yard, which it is, not located within a wetland, that's not an issue. And again, just to give a little aerial perspective, you can see there's quite a bit of vegetation, some on her property, some on an adjacent property. And so as staff was doing this review, we felt that the existing landscaping, the existing trees are meeting the requirement for providing that dense vegetative buffer. In the event that the neighboring property would remove that, there is stipulation that a fence meeting that six-foot in height requirement be provided. And so that has been made as a condition laid out in Frank's report. So that, we believe, satisfies that performance criteria. The interim use permit would terminate upon ownership change to the property, or if it lapsed in use for one year or greater. Again, staff's review of the performance standards within Section 1147 and finds the interim use permit application meets all the standards. There is a finding's a fact in your packet. And then on the last page of the staff report, Frank has laid out five stipulations, again referencing back to the zoning ordinance, as well as how the interim use permit would terminate, again, upon sale or discontinued use for more than a year. Again, I will stand for any questions to the best of my ability, based on what the zoning ordinance tells us, and the applicant will be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak on this Agenda item, you can please come forward now.
Hello. My name is Julie Astergard, and my husband Jay is also here tonight.
Will you pull the microphone down a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
Let me know, is this okay? Okay, perfect. We live at 18031 Jacard Path in Lakeville. We were the first family to live in our development. We've lived here for 25 years. We're here to share our concerns about our next-door neighbor's application for a permit to have bees. An article in the Sun this week news in 2017 included the following comments. Councilmember Colleen LeBeau expressed concern about allowing beehives because many people are extremely allergic to bee stings, and allowing people to farm them could put them in a life-threatening situation. She questioned how long-term residents would feel with the change to allow beehives on neighboring property when there was no such ordinance in place when they moved in. Councilmember Lou Kellyer said he supports the ordinance, which limits the location and number of hives allowed on a property, but would propose reviewing it after a year to see if there are problems or complaints. "If there are issues, I'd like to be able to look at that," Kellyer said. "I don't have anybody who's allergic, but I could definitely see how people would be concerned about that." Mayor Doug Anderson said he also supports the ordinance, but shared concerns about how the bees could affect people. The Holman's request to keep bees is the first to come forward since adoption of the regulations. The concerns expressed in this article mirror the concerns we have as a next-door neighbor. My daughter is severely allergic to bees and needs to carry a medically prescribed EpiPen. Several of our friends are also allergic to bee stings, one of whom also requires an EpiPen. They understand that bee stings can occur naturally anywhere in nature, but intentionally placing a hive or hives of bees on an adjacent city property is irresponsible. Unlike chickens that are in a coop, dogs that are leashed, these bees are not contained. The Holman's request is for up to two hives. One hive has 10,000 bees, and she has said that she's planning to purchase a second hive next year of an additional 10,000 bees. That's 20,000 bees even before they reproduce. I understand that typically one-third of the bee population forages, but that's still thousands more than would appear naturally in our vicinity. Having that number of bees exponentially increases the likelihood that our guests and daughter could be stung. We have a large garden filled with flowering bushes, annuals, and perennials, approximately 50 feet by 25 feet, and it's on the side right next to their property. Having a few bees visit there that occur naturally in nature is one thing. Intentionally placing thousands upon thousands more next door is completely different and has serious ramifications. As I've stated, several of our friends and our daughter are allergic to bee stings. Most people don't fully understand bee sting allergies. Each time someone is stung, they're susceptible to more and more serious reactions. The last time my daughter was stung, she needed immediate medical intervention. Reactions can range from mild to severe. Severe reactions to a bee sting include anaphylaxis, which is life-threatening and requires emergency medical treatment. The symptoms of anaphylaxis can develop rapidly: difficulty breathing, loss of consciousness. It can cause death within minutes. This is serious. Most people think, well, if you're stung, just use an EpiPen. An EpiPen does not take the place of medical care and requires emergency help immediately after using. It's a scary situation. I can understand having bees on a property with five acres or so where there's plenty of room for them to forage. We are in a neighborhood where our properties are close together, and this will directly affect how I can use my property. As a reminder, these bees are not contained. I should not have to consider whether or not we can have friends over who have severe allergies to bee stings. I should not have to wonder if we stay inside when my daughter and grandchildren are over, when normally we play in the side yard next to their property. I should not have to consider tearing out a large garden on my property that I have planted and cultivated for the last 25 years, for the safety of my daughter and my friends. Their decision to raise thousands of bees adjacent to our property, where we have guests and family members with medically diagnosed allergies from bee stings, is reckless. I request that the permit is denied or at least delayed until the city places additional restrictions on these permits that address the concerns initially expressed by the council members and mayor before it was instituted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Fellow commissioners? Yes.
I have a couple of questions for Director Goodroad, who might be able to answer. I understand in the planning report that neighbors within 500 feet were notified of this, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, that is greater than what's in statute?
That is correct. Whenever we have a public hearing notice, state statute requires us to send notices to adjacent properties with 350 feet of the boundary of the subject property in which the application is concerned. The City of Lakeville requires that to be within 500 feet.
Thank you. And then I understand the concerns about reaction. I'm someone that carries an EpiPen. What is, I under, I know that EMS has EpiPens, but what about our other first responders? Do the, do the fire station have those?
My understanding is the fire department, those members who take calls do. I don't believe we got confirmation whether the police officers do.
Okay. And fires usually gets there before the EMS does anyways in the city. So, thank you. Those are all my questions for Director.
Thank you.
I also had a couple of questions. Is there anywhere that I saw in the staff report that there is recourse if there's unusual aggressive behavior? Is there anywhere that that's defined?
The terminology is not defined.
Okay. How, how is that determination made, then? Whether it's unusual or not?
I don't know. Deborah, you might be able to help answer that one better than I can. I'm not an expert on bees. But yeah, when the ordinance was written, that particular statement was not defined.
Again, this is my first year beekeeping, so I'm learning as I go as well. Done lots of studying. So when they become aggressive or defensive, they are defending their hive. Mostly it would be for when the beekeeper goes into the hive, whether you have to wear a suit or not. Depends on the temperament, which these are bred, which I said before, for their gentle temperament. Sorry, I don't know how else to answer that, but yeah, you would end up requeening, bringing in a new queen, which has some new characteristics. It would tame the hive back down again.
And then I just have a couple more questions. So if, if the bees, so is there any recourse for neighbors if the bees become a nuisance or make it difficult or impossible for neighbors to enjoy their yards, whether or not there's stinging or just everywhere?
As, as with any interim use permit or conditional use permit, there is always the opportunity, if we do receive complaints, concerns, that we can, we can get involved. And we can visit with the property owner that is holding the permit, find out exactly what is going on, visit with the person who is complaining or having a concern over it, find out what's going on from there. And, and if we do see that they are in violation of what the ordinance requires and what the interim use permit stipulations say, then we can bring it to the Planning Commission Council for revocation. So there is steps in which we can do that for any interim use permit or any conditional use permit.
And then just my last question would be, is there any sort of prohibition on neighbors using like bee spray or pest control or that sort of thing?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Tina, Ms. Goodroot maybe should stay there, but I thought we should ask Officer Hanson if he can answer the question about do police carry EpiPens?
Law enforcement does not. We are trained to use them, but we do not carry them.
Thank you. This is our first apiary. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Apiary. So 10,000 bees, bees sounds like massive uncontrollable. I could never imagine wanting to have that anywhere, for me to be anywhere near it. How many bees, and whether this is from Ms. Goodroot or from Ms. Holman, how many bees are normally around? I, too, garden a lot and have been really working hard to have mine be as beautiful as possible. My favorite thing is flowers. I'm not doing vegetables, so it's everything the bees would like. How many bees are there normally, and how many bees would be coming out of the hive that are foraging and that kind? I understand someone said a third of the bees are out foraging. What, what does that mean? How far do they go? Do they just come to my yard if I live next door? I don't understand any of those pieces.
I do know when bees are desperate, they can go up to five miles to get their food. Typically, they stay around within mile, two-mile radius of their hive for foraging.
Can I ask another question? And if I'm normally out in my yard doing gardening, in my lilacs and my flowers and everything else, I don't, I mean, I see some bees, not a lot. If someone had a colony next to me, living next door, is that where the bees would come? Because my garden would provide everything that they're interested in?
I can't say they wouldn't come to you.
And would it be?
I mean, you, you wouldn't have flowers if it wasn't for bees.
Understood.
Yes.
But they seem to be doing fine growing them with the number of bees that are around. So to have 10,000, you're saying a third of those would be out looking for?
Correct.
Food?
Do keep in mind, bees only live 35 to 45 days, and then the process starts over again.
And so the 10,000 gets reduced every 35 to 40 days, and then they reproduce?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an ongoing cycle. So there's always eggs being laid, bees dying. Yes.
Okay. All right.
And just to add to the stinging thing or aggressiveness, is bees do not sting unless they are rolled in your hand, something rolls them, or they're pinched and they let off their pheromone, then that alarms the whole colony.
And if it alarms the whole colony, do they all come running?
The ones that need to.
Okay.
Unless you smoke that area right away, then they cannot communicate.
Thank you.
So my brother is a beekeeper. He has a hive, although he doesn't live in Lakeville. I have been to his house multiple times, and I've actually, they also have a very large garden, but I guess just for some perspective, I have not seen bees all over his property. They generally, to my experience, in his hive, they are not like out of their hive in, in like mass amounts that one might think. They're just there, and they don't really do anything. From my experience, I've been there with my child, with my animal, and we've never had any issues, although I don't, I don't know what type of bees they are or anything like that, but just to give like a little bit more perspective, I guess, of that and the experience that I have had, I haven't seen them in mass quantities be like outside or be a nuisance around a garden or in a close proximity. I don't know if that's helpful.
Maybe two questions, one maybe for the applicant or anyone knowledgeable about bees. I think responding or trying to get at the, I think, the crux of the issue of, do we know for a size of this colony or hive, how dispersed the bees are? You mentioned that they typically will go and forage for up to a mile and even further if need be. Do bees tend to forage or go to select or congregate in areas, right, if they find, you know, flower gardens or anything like that, where they would tend to repeat or group higher, in higher rates than normal? Or do they go in large areas seeking foraging? Maybe one follow-up. Would you expect a colony or hive of this size to be any different than one that would occur naturally? Okay. And then one maybe for staff. I think certainly this exact situation was maybe one, you know, for the first colony request that we have here, probably testing the limits, probably didn't anticipate that when the ordinance was written seven years ago? Did I hear that right? When it was written and it was discussed, did we, as a city, look at any peer cities and see if there were any increases in incident rates of bee attacks, complaints, things like that, for other cities in the area that have adopted these ordinance and had colonies put in?
I think Plenty Manager Jensen could probably give a little bit more historical perspective, but I'm not aware of any research that we've done after the fact, once the ordinance has been put into place with other cities.
Yeah, at the time that the language was proposed, it was actually a school group that came in and did, and presented it to us, and that's how the issue came up, but that was ultimately adopted by council. We did not do beyond perhaps a cursory review of, of perhaps some of the neighboring cities to see whether they had regulations for, for bees on hand, but there was not a, there was not a widespread study about the issue before it was put into place.
I saw in the staff report that when the ordinance was put in place, you looked at other cities. Were they similar lot sizes? Because all the beekeepers that I've talked to have much larger lots than we would see in a neighborhood here. I'm just wondering if that was looked at when they adopted this?
Again, the, the information was brought forward and proposed by a group. Typically, when we're looking at communities for, to see how they address issues, we look at some of our area communities that are very similar to us, Burnsville, Apple Valley, Rosemount, Eagan, et cetera. So yes, those, those communities do have similar lot sizes to Lakeville, which is why we use them for those type of research and comparisons.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was here when that discussion took place. I might be able to add some to that. I know that one of the things that we discussed was that, you know, even in like Minneapolis, that, that they're allowed, and those are significantly smaller lots, and I, I know that we did talk, Commissioner Swenson might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but we did talk about tailoring the ordinance to restrictions based on lot size. You know, it's a different picture if you are in a neighborhood like the applicant or if you are on one of the, you know, 10-acre lots in the city.
Madam Chair, I think Commissioner Kaluza's on the right path here, that we, we did have those conversations, and, and I was around at the same time when, when this came through, and to my recollection, we did, when we, this ordinance was crafted and, and when it was put together, it was very much based on what neighboring communities had already done. This was, we were not pioneers in this area by any stretch of the imagination. Many of our peer communities, like mentioned, Apple Valley, Burnsville, Eagan, Plymouth, Maple Grove, as examples, typically already had an ordinance like this in place, similar types of restrictions. So we weren't working from scratch when the ordinance was put together. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are differences in how many bees we allow depending on lot size, so we did do some crafting based on lot size and what was anticipated, that type of thing. Again, we, we're not pioneers here in what we did and what we created with the ordinance and what we put together here. If I may continue. Similar to other commissioners, I have family members who are beekeepers, not necessarily primary parts of their business. I have one part of my family that, it's actually the kids have bees, and they, they sell honey at local county events and that type of thing. And I will grant they're on a much larger acreage situation and in what they're doing than what we are looking at here. But similarly, as was mentioned, Minneapolis is the complete opposite example that allows this type of thing on much smaller lots and that type of thing. I've been to multiple family members' places with bees, and I don't feel like you're overrun with bees or anything around you. It feels natural, like normal habitat, that type of thing. I have family members who are very allergic to bee stings, work in the floriculture and horticulture industry, and are around bees and that type of thing, and it's, it's, it's part of what they have to deal with in their life. So I'm cognizant of those issues as well. So I'm cognizant of those issues as well. So mulling over a lot of things in my head here as, as we're looking at this and thinking about it. Last thing I just want to ask Ms. Goodroad here. Can you talk a little about, we've used that pyramid of discretion on what the Planning Commission can and can't do or should be doing. Can you talk about where we are in that kind of pyramid and what our discretion is here with an interim use permit?
Yep. So if you recall that pyramid, we're close to the top. We're just from the second one down, which is kind of automatic approvals like a site plan, as long as we're meeting the ordinance requirements. So very similar to any kind of conditional use and interim use. When we have stipulations, and that's why whenever we have an interim use or conditional use, we list those stipulations right in the ordinance. We go through the application materials and make sure, whether it's the initial application or revisions of plans, that we're able to identify that they meet the stipulations. And if they do meet the stipulations, the, the permit should be approved.
Yes.
If I'm right, this was 2017 when the ordinance was passed, and now it's seven years later and we're having our first one. It kind of feels like maybe we need to revisit and see what's going on in other cities with their experiences and figure out if there's been other problems since we don't really know any of that before we move forward with it. And I, I did note when our, at, at the public hearing, the letter that was read, that it was a review after one year in the ordinance. And since we've not enacted anything of the ordinance, would that apply to after one year reviewing it? Once the apiary is allowed? I'm under, I'm not understanding that part of it.
I'm not entirely sure either, since I wasn't here in 2017. But it appears from what she read that there might have been some discussion at council level that it should be examined, I think with the assumption that after that ordinance would be put in place, somebody would come in right away and make an application, and that didn't happen. I think in this case, as an interim use, a stipulation could be added for staff to visit the property, visit with the applica, make sure everything is going well and we're not having any issues. If you wanted to add that as a condition, I think that would be appropriate. But I'm not entirely sure what that one council member, former council member reference to one year was. I wasn't here then.
I would be supportive of that stipulation. I, I was here when, when this ordinance went in and, you know, we did think that more people, people jumped on the chickens and not as many people were as excited about bees, I guess. But, you know, this is our first application. You know, if there are issues that arise, I'd, I'd be open to, you know, look, looking at it and our, I mean, in our work session today, we're talking about zoning ordinance amendments. We do that regularly to deal with issues that arise. Yeah, I would be open to looking at that if there are issues. But to me, this comes down to, and Commissioner Swenson mentioned it and Director Goodroad explained it, there's kind of a, a pyramid. You know, at the bottom is things where we have a lot of discretion over. It's things like zoning, it's writing of ordinances. And, you know, the closer you get to the top, the less discretion you have. And, you know, the function of the Planning Commission is really to look at for something like an interim use permit. Okay, this is what the zoning ordinance says. These are the criteria in the, that zoning ordinance for someone to qualify for an interim use permit. And we're looking at this application and, you know, with the help of staff, looking to see, under what is written in the zoning ordinance, does this application coming before us meet those criteria? And as long as that applicant does, we don't have a lot of discretion whether or not to deny that permit. And like I said, I'd be open to stipu, an additional stipulation that, you know, staff go on and check to make sure that everything's okay. And I would hope that the applicant, you know, we can't require this, but, you know, would attempt to work with their neighbors if any issues do arise and, and kind of be that good neighbor so everyone can enjoy their own property in the way that they wish to. But I, I plan on supporting this. I, I've read the staff report. I believe that Ms. Holman is meeting the ordinance with her application, but I would support that additional stipulation.
I have a further question I forgot to ask in my first part. Thank you, Chair. There was some comments in the report from Mr. Dempsey about the directional walls and things that needed to be up. And I see how it was placed in the photograph in front of the shed. And I don't know, is there another wall on the other side to make it grow taller? And so the bees could just go straight across into the neighbor's yard except for going towards the back? They'd have to go up and then over the shed or else they could just choose to go straight out and over to the neighbors? Is that, and I don't know how bees fly or anything about it, so.
What the ordinance calls for is a fence or a wall or some vegetation that's capable of interrupting the direct flight of the bees and to redirect. And so in the review of this, with the amount of vegetation both on the subject property and adjacent property, we felt that was being, that category of requirements was being met. And so the stipulation to add fencing was added. And as a condition of the ultimate interim use permit is if that vegetation on neighboring property were removed so that that criteria then would no longer be met.
Yes. Quick question for Ms. Holman. We had had several comments about, you know, you'd requeen them if they got aggressive, but who determines when they're aggressive? Is it you? Is it? And how do you make that determination?
That is determined on how they react when I open the hive, on whether they just attack me or let me do my job, is your first indication.
I would be supportive of the one-year follow-up on this. And then a couple of other comments that, there's a lot of things in life that just because you can do it, doesn't necessarily mean you should do it. And I would encourage the, the neighbors to be vocal to, if you have issues, bring them up, bring them to council. And, and just, let's work through this as opposed to having a problem come up.
Any additional comments?
Madam Chair, maybe it would be good if we kind of get a sense of the Planning Commission, if they would be supportive of that additional stipulation.
Yes, yes.
Maybe a question, there are two things. One was maybe more in the near term after build-out and one was maybe stated a year after. I don't know if we're thinking both or which one is more important for this defining success.
Yeah, I, I would be in support of Commissioner Kaluzza's or what Ms. Goodroad said regarding having staff maybe come out and visit, maybe after they get there and settled to kind of determine what that looks like earlier as opposed to like maybe a full year.
Madam Chair, maybe Ms. Jensen or Ms. Goodroad might have some wordsmithing suggested language that will help guide us.
What I would suggest, and I'll look to Ms. Holman to get some thoughts too. Again, I don't know a lot about beekeeping, but once you obtain the bees and they're established in the hive, they start doing their thing, I'm assuming. So maybe it's her contacting staff once that is all established. And we can go out, walk the property, visit the property, just see what kind of activity things are going on. And then I would add, do another follow-up within a year. Seem reasonable? Yep. And that'll help staff learn a little bit more too, since we haven't had this kind of application. Had lots of chickens, like you said, but haven't had this kind of application yet.
Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I motion to recommend approval of the Deborah Holman interim use permit, subject to the six stipulations listed in the May 3, 2024 planning report as amended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Will you please take a roll call vote?
Chichini.
Aye.
Kaluzza.
Aye.
Morobich.
Aye.
Zimmer.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
All right, and then, I forgot, this doesn't go in front of?
It does.
It does. Okay. So when will this go in front of?
May 20th.
May 20th. All right. Well, best of luck, Ms. Holman. Hopefully this goes well. Again, as stated, communicate, work together. It'll be a learning experience. And then those additional stipulations will be added in there. So thank you. All right. And then after this, we have our work session and this meeting is adjourned.